Let's get started. Well, welcome. Thanks for being here. This is City Council District Four, Mulan Louie's endorsement interview. I'm going to ask each of you to start out with just a one or two minute intro. And please tell us just a little bit about yourself, what you do for work and your work history, whether you've had any civic or community involvement, and then finally why you're running for office. Chloe, let's start with you.
First off, thank you for having me here today. My name is Chloe Mason. I've lived in District Four for almost a decade now. Actually, I live four blocks away, so I was able to take a little walk over here. Within that time that I've been here, I've served on the Board of Directors for Raphael House and their Strategic Planning Committee, the Soho House Portland Committee, Portland Art Museum Committee, and I currently serve on the Police, Portland Police Bureau Equity Advisory Council. And I'm also PPS mom. And as a single mom, you know that if it could be defined in one word, that would be hustle. Getting hustling to practice, hustling to make the meals, getting to school on time. And that's exactly what I want to bring to City Council is hustle. We are facing some serious issues and I'm seeing zero hustle. We need to boost our businesses. You know, you keep hearing, keep Portland weird. What makes Portland weird? Our unique businesses and business owners. And I want to reduce the bureaucratic hurdles that they face, streamlining the permitting process. There are small business owners that refuse to give up on Portland. I want to fix the issues on our streets and end unsanctioned street camping. And we can do that by building and citing more shelter and recovery housing. We need to give Portlanders a safe space to go. And lastly, combating our fentanyl epidemic by hitting it hard. We keep getting attention to the problem and not enough towards those solutions. And we can do this by providing full continuum support and wraparound support like housing. And we just need more hustle all around for this. And it's taking the lives of Portlanders every single day, including three friends of mine over the last three years.
And what do you do for work?
I have been a sports and fitness model for 13 years. And if you know anything about the modeling industry, 13 years is a very long time. So that's what I do currently. And I write children's books about the complexities of living between two households and as biracial child and just navigating those emotions for them.
Thank you. Chris?
Well, I've lived in Oregon for almost 30 years. I worked in the freight industry for 20 years. Yellow Freight laid me off just a little over a year ago. On July 28th, they closed their doors and laid 30,000 of us off. 22,000 of those were Teamsters. I was a Teamster. And let me see, I now I'm shifted over. I took a year off. I rode out unemployment. I wanted, I wasn't sure what I wanted to do next other than run for office. That has been my main goal is running for office and getting progressive issues out there. So I took a year off. Now I'm driving for Uber. I can turn on and off the app and it gives me the ability to be able to go door to door, attend events like this and be out there in the community.
Great. What kind of civic and community involvement have you had? Have you sat on board?
Yeah, I've sat on the Oregon Voter Rights Coalition. Basically, fair elections. That was way back when. That turned into later on Honest Elections, which got us the campaign finance reform that we're running under now in Portland and Molloma County. We just passed campaign finance reform at the state level. We started running a ballot initiative and we pulled that initiative back after we had about 100,000 signatures just before this last legislature ended. Probably within the last week, the governor started text messaging our chief petitioner, Jason Kefory. And there was a back and forth. He signposted to our organization, Honest Elections, that he was in this communication and we kept it going. In the last week of the legislature, she, Tina Kotek, promised to pass something, do some, make campaign finance reform.
What reforms were you guys looking at with the ballot initiative?
We were looking at bringing it down to the level where your and my contributions, you know, 500 bucks would be just as good as Phil Knight's 500 bucks instead of Phil Knight purchasing elections. So we worked with the governor.
So just making paths for what?
Yeah. They wanted much higher limits. Oregon was one of five states with no campaign finance reform whatsoever. Now, there are only four states. We finally, it was, it was a historic thing for the legislature to even take this on and to pass something, anything campaign finance reform wise through the legislature. So we got something passed. It wasn't exactly what we wanted, but we've got this next legislature to go through that we can try when it comes up so that we can probably put forward some new amendments or assemble a new. We meet every other week. It used to be weekly when we were running the campaign. But I've worked on that for a very long time, for the last couple of decades.
Thank you. Can you remind us what offices you have run for before? We've seen you here.
Which ones? All of them?
Maybe just past five years.
Okay, okay. So for the past 16 years, I've run every two years statewide. You have, as a minor party, you have to run a statewide candidate and get 1% in that race in order to maintain ballot access. It's just the way it goes in Oregon. That's the rule. So that's why you see a lot of candidates, they say pejoratively, you know, this person is a perennial candidate, I'm a perennial candidate. They need to get that right. So I've run, the first time I ran, my dad, my dad had died. And I asked my mom, they were asking me in the Green Party, they wanted to fill all five congressional seats and make history for the Green Party in Oregon. So they had doctors, a teacher, lawyer, you know, they all had degrees. Here I am, a truck driver. And I thought, okay, I'm too small for this, went home. My mom said, she went to her cabinet, grabbed my grandfather's book. He was Eisenhower's speechwriter, military industrial complex. And she brought me his book. She said, here, your grandfather was in politics. I think you should run. So once, once I started running, I never looked back. I ran because we got 1% in each one of those races that represented a statewide race. We did it again. That was 2008, 2010, ran for US Congress.
So every two years up until 20, you ran in 2022?
I ran, yeah.
Okay, what did you run for in 2022?
2022, I ran for US Senate. Before that, in the primary, I ran for Bureau of Labor and Industry because I'm a Teamster and I figured.
Is this your first time running for city office?
Yeah, because we got campaign finance reform, because we got public funding and we worked really hard on it, instant runoff voting. I figured this would be a natural fit to finally be running on a suite of issues that we had worked really hard to bring to Portland.
Great, thank you. Okay, let's talk about homelessness. It's, you know, Portlanders number one for it right now. The early things aren't going super well. I'd like to ask each of you, one, if you support the city remaining in the Joint Office of Homeless Services? And two, if so, where do you think the Joint Office is, is going wrong? Chloe, let's start with you.
I do believe that we could stay in the Joint Office. I know there has been a proposed amendment by Renee Gonzalez. I'm trying to think exactly.
The ten, ten labeling?
No, it was if we see that what they are doing and if we choose not, then we have the option to cancel the contract, so to speak. And I feel like we should see that through. And I mean, it's something new, so why not? I think in some aspects, we need to give new ideas the chance to work. And I mean, that's the whole point of this new charter system. More people, more diversity in lived experience and different perspectives. So I would like to see that through.
Where do you think the, where do you think the city and the county are going wrong with how they're dealing with homelessness?
First of all, the communication. I mean, it's taken a year to decide on, you know, the one thing that they're deciding on about the finances. And I think as a unit, we can't really see much progress until, until we get our communication between each other down.
What about sort of allocation of resources? You know, there's kind of always been this, some people will say it's sort of a false dichotomy, but shelter first versus housing first. Do you think the Joint Office is spending too much on, on, you know, rent assistance versus shelter? Do you think they're spending too much on shelter versus rent assistance? I mean, it's all, you know, it's all about how you break up the pots of money. Where do you see the Joint Office going wrong with how it's spending money right now?
I would say the money should be spent on more shelter first. And that's where it should go. I mean, to even fix our streets and look at revitalizing downtown, we're not going to be able to get people off the streets if they have nowhere to go. And so I feel like that should be more of the focus on where we're spending our funds.
Great, thank you. Chris?
I'm here to work in the public interest. I, I believe that the council that came before was not working in the public interest. I believe that they were doing backroom deals. There's evidence of that in other places. And in this instance, I think that we should be revisiting the entire, you know, everything that they've done before. I think that we need to focus on housing people as, as full term as we can. Just sheltering people, I think, is a Band-Aid on the situation. For the funding aspect, I think that we should have a publicly owned bank in Portland. It should be, we should bring all of our funding back from Wall Street and from big banks. And we should be investing it and reinvesting it here in the community. I ran twice as Oregon State Treasurer. I ran on a state bank platform. There is a national organization and an Oregon organization in place, boots on the ground with people in other communities and other cities and other counties and other states that are pushing for state banks, community banks.
Do any other cities, major cities currently have that model?
You have Los Angeles that's fighting for one. Los Angeles is a really big one.
But none that currently actually have it in place?
As far as I know, no. But there is a vibrant movement for that. And there are lots of feasibility studies out there that people are putting in place and they're trying to get into the committees and get them passed.
Okay, thank you.
Do you, oh, go for it. Do you have any hesitation or nervousness with introducing something new like that versus looking at what has already worked in our peer markets?
In?
In our peer markets?
In peer markets, like similar markets, like, you know, other major cities, Salt Lake City.
Versus starting something new versus looking at?
Well, Salt Lake City did have a program and it was, it was successful when it started. And I think that we should be focusing and patterning off of the Salt Lake City.
Oh, that was just the city I threw out the question.
Actually, Rocky, Rocky Anderson, Rocky Anderson was the mayor there and started the program. And that was a good program. I think we should model after that, housing first. And that is in my, in my platform as well as public banking. Do I have any reservations? Oh goodness, no. I think we should go forward with public banking. I think we can do green infrastructure projects. We can do housing infrastructure projects. We can do public housing. And keeping the money here versus sending it to Wall Street and financing. Sure, those are models that work, but we're also sending $100 million a year to Wall Street in taxes and fees, interest.
Let's talk about if each of you, if you're elected to the City Council, you know, you're going to be acting as a legislator more than a manager of bureaus in our current form of government. What's the first policy or ordinance that you would seek to bring to your colleagues on the City Council? Chris, let's start with you.
First, the first issue I would bring to my colleagues?
The first ordinance or policy you would try to pass?
I would probably focus on trying to convert PGE into a public utility. PGE is wanting to log Forest Park. The first thing I would do is block that so that they couldn't log. I think that they need to do environmental impact studies. I think that there needs to be more accountability and transparency in the process. I was at a meeting last night where I spoke and I put forward the idea of creating a public utility district out of PGE and signposting that that would be a major plank in my platform.
Does PGE have an alternative to cutting through? Because my understanding was that they had to do it for, you know, network reasons?
They say that they have several different plans available. Perhaps maybe they could relocate where they put the AI, you know, or the energy infrastructure instead of on the, on the soil that they have, on the land that they have purchased.
So you think they're doing it because it's cheaper? Like, what do you think is going on behind the?
I think it's cheaper, I think it's cheaper for them. I think they're a corporation. I think that they are looking for, this is a profit motive. They're, they're not doing this in the public interest. They're not logging the trees in the public interest and they're not citing this on the most expensive land. They're trying to do it as cheap as possible so that they can get more money out of it. So it's an extraction industry. So they're extracting profit out of, you know, the ratepayers. They, they're raising our rates. They've raised them 18%. They're looking to raise 17 or 7% or more. That's a, you know, combined 25%. That's, that's a huge rate increase. We, there's a record of our running ballot initiatives to turn PGE into a public utility. 20 years ago, I worked on that campaign at the same time that I worked on this one.
Great, thank you. Chloe?
Yes, so I consider myself the small business owners candidate. And I want them to know that their security is at the forefront of our minds. And they should have every tool in their toolkit to keep, to be able to just focus on running their business. And in 2021, Portland made the exception for roll down gates for their business. And vandalism is something they cannot worry about during our civil unrest. However, it only goes till 2029. Yes, that seems like it's a far way off. However, most of our small business owners are signing five-year leases. A lot of our small business owners can't afford private security, so they should have the option to be able to utilize that. And I want to make that a permanent, a permanent policy here in Portland. It's worked in other major cities. I know that Portland doesn't like to consider itself a metropolitan city. We run kind of more as a big town. However, we're already there and we should look at other markets, things that, that work. I would rather see thriving businesses other than vacant historic buildings.
Thanks. I mean, obviously, our small businesses are struggling for a lot of reasons and not just in the downtown core, but also in East Portland, 82nd, I mean, you name it. What do you think the city has not done yet that they should have done by now to keep small businesses open?
Loosen the criteria for funding. I believe it's called OBI, Oregon Business Incentive. And the criteria for them to secure funding was to have a minimum of 15 employees. I don't know many small businesses that have 15 employees. That should be loosened to maybe three business, three employees. Sometimes it's a mom and pop and then they have one employee. Also, they're signing five-year leases. That should be cut down. A lot of businesses can't sign a five-year lease initially or that's a huge risk to see if it even works. I mean, we're in the top five for the hardest places to start a business in the country. And we need to, to.
Do you know why that is?
Permitting process, zoning, funding. We don't have a consistent economy right now. So it's a big risk to come here now. And I mean, it's really expensive to start a business here.
Is the Oregon Business Incentive, is that a state program?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, so as far as what the, the city can do on a, on a hyper local level to either attract businesses here or make sure that their doors actually stay open? What do you think, what do you think are things that the city should be doing that they're not?
We can model something similar. We can provide funding from the city, also not even just funds in and of itself, but offer, you know, partner with them for training programs and, you know, getting more employees trained to be in the market. If they need more employees, getting people, and that could even go hand in hand with our services for people getting out of treatment. Things like when they're starting over, how can we, how can we partner to bridge that gap possibly?
As far as fentanyl, I mean, the county and the city, was that a joint project, the 90-day thing, Lucas?
I have no idea.
Yes, you do. The 90-day fentanyl crisis, we're going to solve it.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so city, county, and state, they all came together on that. It's sort of unclear exactly what, you know, I know there were some more arrests than there previously were. But like how, you know, we get a lot of candidates in here saying, we need to be more aggressive about the fentanyl crisis. We need to deal with this. But, you know, I think everyone would agree with that. What are your specific ideas for actually cracking down on the fentanyl crisis in a way that the city, county, and state haven't tried currently? Chloe, let's start with you.
I think there's a lot of confusion about what our deflection centers are. Everyone's asking, what is it? And I agree. I think there should be more infrastructure in place and understanding of what it is. I know even the friends of mine that have passed, when they would have that moment of clarity to want to get help, they didn't know where to go. And I think making it easier to access services. I mean, you can call DePaul, you can call Trillium Services and normally they're completely full. They don't have a bed. They don't have detox available and you need a waitlist. And there's a window, a scientific study where you have 72 hours. Somebody that is hoping to get treatment and detox, by that 72-hour mark, normally they change their mind. That glimmer of hope to see a new life is gone. And I think we just need to make it easier. If this is a number one problem, it should be one of the easiest ways to get treatment or where to go or resources until a bed opens up. I think there hasn't been enough attention on where to go.
And do you think that's more of a communication problem? Like the city and the county aren't, you know, handing out enough flyers saying, here's your availability? Or do you think it's more of an infrastructure problem? We just don't have enough places for people to go?
I think both. I believe Portland, yet again, puts a lot of attention on the issue versus the solutions that we have to offer. And yet, yet again, we don't have the infrastructure in place to help the people, the amount of people that need help in Portland. But if it's one of our number one issues, we got to treat it as such and we got to give it the attention, whether it's the flyers or online ads or what, what have you. Let them see that there is an option. You see billboards for, you know, quitting smoking and, you know, whatever, weight loss or whatever. If this is our number one issue, those are the number one things that should be shown.
Thanks. Chris?
This is a healthcare crisis that, you know, it deserves funding. It deserves, like, looking toward Portland's street response and expanding it. We need to, in order to fund it, we could use the, the public dollars back here instead of sending them to Wall Street. I think that's key for almost all of these issues that deal with homelessness, with deal, mental health, which deal with drug addiction. If we get people off the street and we focus on that, I think that takes care of a lot of it. As for the, the fentanyl, I think we're, we're in crisis. And I think the, the current administration has failed to address it. In order to combat it, I think we need to focus on a community response. And I think that would definitely include expansion of services, wraparound services that would be available to them to be able to get into treatment.
Thank you. Which of the current members of the city, of the City Council, which member, single member, do you most agree with as far as policy goes? Chris, let's start with you.
Wow, that's going to be a difficult one. I don't know that I agree with anyone on the council at this time. You know, there, there was a time when I did and it was with great reservation after a while. So I think.
And who was that?
Oh, gosh, what was her name?
She's no longer on the council?
No, so.
Was it recent or?
No.
No, okay.
Yeah, and then years ago, you know, there had been people, you know, I, I definitely, I want to adopt, like Bud Clark had a 12-point plan that, you know, I think we should be, you know, implementing full force. I think community policing, instead of having the cops, you know, violate laws and, you know, you know, shooting people at, you know, at a moment's notice. I think we need a different response. We need a, a community response with people going out there and intervening.
Great. Chloe, which member of City Council would you say you're most aligned with?
I would say, I know it might be a problematic thing to say at this time, but I would have to say Carmen Rubio. In her recent time in office, there was a number of policies she was able to pass. And one that I really was happy to see was her advanced housing policy and making it less expensive to develop here and, and offering incentives to do so.
Great, thank you.
Sorry, you brought up Renee's policy earlier. Do you think you're closer politically to Renee or Carmen?
Carmen.
Definitely.
Yeah, okay. How much money have you each raised? Because I know you got in late to the race. Okay, how much money have you raised to date, roughly? Doesn't have to be so.
Roughly, I would say about 7,000 with a projected from our fundraiser, big fundraiser, coming up an additional 15.
Okay, okay. Chris, what about you?
We passed the tier one mark. We raised roughly about 32, 34,000 or, yeah, or 3,400, rather.
So you qualified for?
We did.
Okay.
For matching funds. For matching funds, yeah. The first tier.
Got it. Can you each rattle off sort of your most important endorsements, whether it's from unions, whether it's from political action committees, whether it's from business groups or elected officials?
Oh, sorry.
Either one.
Okay. My most recent endorsement was from Shannon Jones Isador. I believe her character on and off, her campaign is consistent. She has been an incredible mentor to me. We kind of speak the same language, her coming from a military background and me coming from the industrial Midwest. Growing up into a family of military veterans sworn in law enforcement, coal miners. Just though our demeanor and the way that we have to carry ourselves, especially as women of color, that's been something that has been imperative to me in this process. I don't look like a lot of politicians. I don't speak sometimes like a lot of them and I look different. And I was so excited about this charter system. And the reason also that I jumped in and moved my timetable up from 26 is because I took a look at the people running and I was really disappointed to not see the diversity that we keep bringing up constantly in conversations, whether it be gender, age, race, even sexuality. I don't, we didn't see it and I was like, okay.
How many other people of color are running in District Four, do you know?
I believe two.
You, including you?
Three, including me.
Okay, what are the other people?
John Terran.
That's right, okay.
And Chiara.
Oh, Chiara, yeah, okay. Thompson, yeah, okay, okay. Any, any union endorsements or political action committee endorsements?
Not, not right now.
Okay, great, thanks. Chris?
Although I'm a Teamster, no endorsements. Yeah, it would be nice to get an in-kind contribution of like printing, but no endorsements from anyone other than the Independent Party of Oregon and the Progressive Party of Oregon and David Delk of the Alliance for Democracy Movement to amend PDx.
Great, thank you. Okay, I have some rapid fire questions. So these are questions that are just yes or no answers. Do you think Portland police needs fewer cops, more cops, or has the correct number now? Chloe?
More.
Chris?
Fewer.
Fewer. Did the Oregon Legislature do the right thing by recriminalizing fentanyl? Yes or no, Chloe?
Yes.
Okay, Chris?
No, not necessarily. That comes with a caveat.
What's the caveat?
We should have had the services in place first, first and foremost.
Are you in support of the city's first? Um, are you in support of the city's first temporary alternative shelter site, Clinton Triangle? It's the one with all the tiny pods, Chloe?
Hundred percent.
Chris?
Yes.
Okay. Do you support the city remaining in the joint office? I think you already answered that, yes? Okay, Chris?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Based on your knowledge of city hall, what's the one bureau or office that you would most like to audit? Because you're, not necessarily suspicious, but because you think there are some real issues in it. Chloe?
Prosper.
Okay. Chris?
Which one? Goodness. I would have to say police.
Okay. Chloe, I'm curious, why do you say Prosper?
There's just a lot of noise around it of, about where their funds are going. And I don't know, to be honest, too much about where their funds are being allocated. So I would love to see on paper, I want to see where it's going, what, to know more about it.
And what's, I mean, the chatter I'm hearing, and I'm curious if it's the same chatter that you're hearing, is that Prosper has sort of, you know, they, their, their bread and butter for many years was these tax-instrumental finance industries. Of course, it led to a lot of education, they got a lot of pushback for that. So they sort of backed up a little bit and now I think a lot of, at least business people would say they're kind of lost. They don't really know where to go. Is that similar to sort of what you're?
One hundred percent.
Do you, I mean, what do you think of TIP districts? Do you think there's a way to do them in a way that doesn't push out people of color? Do you think there's a responsible way to do TIP districts? Or what, what do you want to see the future of Prosper look like?
Again, I, that is one area that is hard for me to speak to because I don't know too much about them. However, I think that there's a way to even listen to the community more. Gentrification is often, well, I would say, all the time, not, not the answer. And so I think they need to listen more before they act.
Which member of city council is slightly different than the question I asked prior about who you most align with? Which member of the city council do you believe has done the most for the city?
Carmen Rubio.
I'd have to agree.
Do you support the city rerouting the excess PSF revenues into, into city bureaus?
Yes.
No.
Who is the one candidate in District Four that you would most want to serve alongside?
Eli Arnold.
Andra.
Who?
Andra.
Andra, oh, Vatavon.
Yeah.
Do you support the city's camping ban as it currently stands? Yes or no?
Yes.
What's, what's the trepidation?
There's, there's not enough infrastructure really to enforce it right now. Where do they go? You can't.
Camp. Well, maybe there's a.
I understand when we have the resources in place, giving someone the option to choose, hey, this is the consequence of not moving or choosing not, not to comply. But also we are giving you hope here and we're giving you a safe place, but until you have the infrastructure to be able to do so, no. So it's a really, it's, it's hard.
So is the problem, when you said there isn't the infrastructure, is the problem that we simply don't have enough beds? Or is the problem that those beds aren't the right sorts of beds?
We don't have enough. We don't have enough beds.
So we recently heard, we recently saw a really interesting statistic that said, and I think it was in the past year, it said that on any given night, what was it, ninety percent of people that were offered shelter in Portland declined? So I, I think there's a lot of people that would argue, actually, we have empty beds every single night. The problem is that people don't necessarily want to go to those beds. How do we solve for that issue?
I think it's, there's not enough, I really want to see people get in the streets. I mean, I've worked with my family, we've had homeless outreach services, but are they getting in on the ground floor and, and talking with people that are waiting outside of Salvation Army, that are waiting outside of shelters, that don't have a place to go? We see the statistics, but who are they talking to? I mean, you talk to somebody and they're sitting out there waiting for a place to go and they don't. So yeah, maybe there is a high percentage of people that are turning it down and it might sound very black and white, but that's also the way I tend to work. Well, there's the consequence. And whether it be addiction or what have you, it is just the repeat behavior, no matter the consequence. And unfortunately, we can't give leeway. It can't be a gray area. It's this or this, and it's going to be for the betterment of our city in long term.
Do you support the city's camping ban?
I don't support sweeps. I don't support arrests. However, if the city is going to continue to do this policy before I get in there, I think they should place them under house arrest, give them a house. You know, this ninety percent joking, but, you know, give them a place to live, provide it for them.
What if we don't have the availability to do that? How can we implement house arrest if they don't have a home?
As you heard, you know, there, there tends to be beds available.
So they would do that inside the shelter?
Yeah, you know, give them, give them a place to stay.
So I think what, like a, a common refrain we hear pretty much from every, every single candidate that comes in here, no one disagrees with this. And we see this too in our reports, that we just don't have the infrastructure, right? We don't have enough, a, a, a lot of it comes down, we don't have enough treatment beds. We, you know, we don't have enough deflection. We barely have a deflection center right now. I mean, that seems to be like the stickiest thing that everyone says, I'm, I'm going to tackle this, I'm going to get more infrastructure, I'm going to make that happen. But everyone says that. I mean, what, if you could each just like take a minute to tell us about why the skills that you bring would be the skills that are missing right now in order to convince the county and get the state on board with actually creating this infrastructure, doing it in a more rapid pace? Because, you know, we have, we have five city council members, I mean, say what you will about them, but they've been trying to do this for a couple of years now and like they haven't made any progress either. It feels like they haven't made progress. So what about you is, I guess, more special? Chloe?
I would like to say I have a high level of communication skills between larger groups, whether it be the countless committees I've been on. I know how to work in those groups and with a background of homeless outreach. I understand from both sides. I've also been the constituent that's been worried about where I'm going to live or, you know, have to have, have to go to the government for help. And so I, I honestly feel like we need data-driven decision-making, but also let's look into our peer markets. How are they tackling this issue? Because a lot of places have actually made a lot of progress post-COVID. So I think instead of introducing new things, let's take a look at what worked.
Are there any cities that you have researched that you think provide a model for what Portland could be?
We just spoke about this and I've been blanking on the exact city that it was. I know it was in the East Coast. I'm so sorry.
As far as homelessness or?
Yes.
Okay, okay. If you think of it.
Was it Houston?
No.
I'm not sure they qualify as the East Coast.
I know.
I know, I was like. That's the country of Texas.
Is it Michigan? I gotta, I gotta think about that.
Okay, okay. Chris, what do you bring?
Well, I would say back in July, I was homeless in my car for all of two thousand twenty-three. And, you know, from November to November, and I was living in my car. The rent, there wasn't rent control to help me out. I was paying two thousand a month for my apartment. I was, then I needed to pay back pandemic rent. That was five hundred a month, so there's twenty-five hundred. Then they sent me a letter. They said they weren't going to raise my rent. I should have gotten that in writing. They said, while you're paying it back, we want you to be able to pay it back. So a couple of weeks later, I get a letter, here's your new lease agreement, and they raised it another five hundred. So I've got the unique perspective in that I'm going to push really hard for rent control. I, I think that people should be able to stay in their housing in the first place that they have. It makes it very difficult for someone, you know, we're all oftentimes one paycheck away from the streets. If there's a major disaster, we're all going to be out there. So my perspect, my perspective is I've, I've been out there. I took showers for a year at Twenty-four Hour Fitness and slept in their parking lot for most of that time until someone gave me a driveway probably in the last few months, right after I got laid off. So, yeah, so I've actually been there. I don't know how many candidates have been homeless. I'm sure there are a few maybe. And it, it gives me a perspective that I really want to solve this, this issue. It's a priority for me.
Great, thank you. Okay, I think we're, we're probably going to wrap up. We have a fun question that we're asking every single candidate, which is what were you best known for in high school? I'll give you an example. Our best answer yet has been, he's, one candidate said that they were the worst player on the varsity soccer team and they only got there because of nepotism and he didn't play a minute all season. Other people said, you know, I was voted most likely to succeed or voted worst dressed or, so anyways, what were you guys known for in high school?
Me?
Yeah, either, either one.
I wouldn't know what I would have been best known as. I did three years in high school and got out and went right into the working world. So.
What was your first job out of high school?
Out of high school? Working for Pizza Hut, throwing pizzas.
Got it. All right, Chloe?
I was often called by my teachers a climate controller. I was very focused on making it to my Ivy League dream schools. And so anytime someone was talking or not paying attention, I would always stop the class and be like, some of us are trying to work here.
So you were a goody-two-shoes?
I was a goody-two-shoes, absolutely. However, it's because I knew my family life at home was, this was my one way out and I only did two years of high school we had before I had to drop out.
Wow.
Yeah.
And did you go to work or what?
I did. There was a family friend that owned, owned a soil technology company. So at sixteen, I was packing these little jars full of soil and spinning them around and while he tested them for toxins and all of those things. I signed up for community college. It just, it did not work for me in that sense. And so what I did is I carried a dictionary in my back pocket and a notebook. And when I go around and hear people that I assume to be influential, I write down the words that they would say, hurry and look them up and try to use them in sentences. So everything that I taught myself to be able to now get where I am and in the circles that I am and how I engage with the community, I've learned on my own through experience.
Great, well, thank you both so much for coming in.
Thank you.
Our endorsement issue is publishing on October sixteenth. If we have any follow-up questions for you guys, we'll reach out eventually. But yeah, thank you guys so much.
Thank you.